I take that as a good credit.
I took that as a compliment, too. Yeah, I feel very lucky to have a reputation like that.
I don't know if anybody will ever say that about me, but whatever.
We did steal you from Monterey.
That's true, that's true.
From California.
Yeah. Well, I don't see, I see, all I care about is the staff, so. Britt, according to my clock, it's 5 o'clock. What does your clock say?
All of my clocks say 5 o'clock.
Oh, good. We've got them all synced, and why don't I call the city council meeting for Carmel by the Sea, special meeting Wednesday, January 20, 2021. Britt, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Forlito?
Here.
Tice?
Here.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Here.
And Mayor Potter?
Here. It appears we have a quorum, and that's good news. Excellent. Why don't we go to the first item which on the agenda is Public Appearance Item, any opportunity for member of the public to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? The three-minute limitation on testimony, if you'd state your name for the record, I would appreciate that. So anybody wishing to speak tonight?
Okay, this is Britt, just reminding everyone, if you want to speak, you would hit star six on your device that will unmute you. Mayor, we do have quite a few people on the call.
I'm not surprised.
Me either.
Well, you're the keeper of the public gate, so if you feel we've given enough time for...
I think we're probably okay. I think we've given enough time for people to unmute their device by now.
Alrighty, then I will close the public comment period and move on to the next one action item. That is a discussion and possible action around outdoor seating in the public right-of-way. Chip, do you want to tee this up and then maybe pass it off to Brandon or Marnie, whichever we want to go?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I first want to welcome Brandon Swanson to our team. It's an odd, obviously under COVID, it's an odd way of not more interpersonally introducing a new key, key staff member to our team, to the village, but Brandon and I have, we're both dedicated to doing whatever we can to virtually meet people and introduce Brandon to people. Brandon comes to us from the wonderful county of Monterey. He's a proud, a proud Pogrovian like myself. He has a background in education in both hospitality and worked locally for the Pebble Beach Company and land use planning, and that's where he's learned his protective nature and the special qualities of our community and certainly our peninsula. And I'm just, I can't tell you how proud I am to have him on board and that he accepted accepted our offer to join us. He's met with most of the executive team and his team in community planning and building, and please, community, don't hesitate to reach out to Brandon. I think you'll find him very intelligent and approachable. So welcome, Brandon. And in the same breath, Mr. Mayor, and I'll do this on the second as well at our regular council meeting, both introduce Brandon and then in the next breath, I thank Marnie Woffler for her tireless efforts in the last year, kind of always thankless in community planning and building for our village, but additionally thankless under the dark umbrella of COVID. Marnie did a wonderful job. She's been dealing with the topic tonight, outdoor seating, for again, almost 11 months of her life with the rest of us, and she's prepared a quick turn on an agenda report. This is a special meeting. We wanted to have this as soon as possible, so thank the public for their patience with us, with scheduling it, with the production of the agenda report yesterday morning. And then, yeah, she'll present the verbal report, which has got a PowerPoint presentation that she prepared today with Brandon. One additional note is that we did receive a lot of correspondence from the community that has been distributed to the council members and it's also been posted on our website. Britt's new goal is to get correspondence posted, so it's viewable by the public and certainly our own Mary Shle as well for production of your article. So with that, Mr. Mayor, this is a discussion of, we're looking for direction on this concept of picnicking in the right-of-way, the right-of-way being a land that's owned by the city in the outdoor seating areas that have been approved through an encroachment permit applied for by private adjacent, in most cases, adjacent private property owners and restaurant owners. So with that, Marnie, please, please take it away.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now. Just one moment. Okay, can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation?
I can.
Wonderful. So as Chip mentioned, we are here tonight to talk about picnicking within our outdoor seating areas in the public way. And by way of just a little bit of background, back on December 13th, the Monterey County Health Department issued an order that closed all of our outdoor dining areas, and that order was set to expire on January 11th. Then shortly thereafter, the state public health officer issued an order closing outdoor dining for the larger Bay Area region, and that order was set to expire on January 8th. And since that time, the state has extended their order until further notice. So we don't have an end date at this point as to when restaurants might be able to reopen for outdoor dining. So at the current time, restaurants are limited to takeout and delivery of food only. Takeout food may be consumed in public places, so people can take their food to the beach, to parks, to public benches, and consume it outdoors. Public consumption of alcohol, however, is not allowed, except on Carmel Beach during certain hours. And an exception has been made as part of our outdoor seating program for the parklets, but it does require table service as well as a permit from Alcoholic Beverage Control. So the question that is before the council this evening is whether the city should allow picnicking within our permitted outdoor seating areas? And if so, should it be limited to the parklets, which are located in the parking spaces? Or should it be allowed in both the parklets and the sidewalk seating areas that were approved as part of the encroachment permit? And then thirdly, whether it should be just approved in all public and private outdoor dining spaces that have been permitted through the city? So if the council chooses to move forward with the picnicking concept, staff does have some recommendations for your consideration, one being to limit the outdoor seating to the parklets as well as to restaurants only. So the outdoor seating areas would not be open for wine tasting rooms or bars, as well as private outdoor dining spaces would remain closed to the general public. Staff would also recommend that the insurance be current for all the existing parklets and that the permit holders enter into an indemnity agreement with the city. Certainly no table service would be allowed, and staff would recommend that signage be posted prohibiting the consumption of alcohol, just so that the message is clear to the general public that that would not be allowed. Also, staff recommends that the picnicking be open to the general public, so the parklets would not be restricted to patrons of the adjacent restaurant, but anyone purchasing takeout food could sit in any one of the parklets and enjoy their meal. Staff also recommends that the permit holder, which is the restaurant, be responsible for sanitizing the area as well as providing trash receptacles for all the to-go containers. Staff would be supportive of allowing the umbrellas to be in use so long as they were removed at the close of business each day, but we would recommend no heaters in these spaces. And then also, with respect to violations, staff would recommend that the permit be revoked at the first violation. And then just a couple of things I want to make sure are very clear. We are not recommending the prohibition on alcohol sales. Restaurants that sell food to go can also sell alcoholic beverages to go, and that would not change. All we are saying is that the alcohol should not be consumed on public property. And then this issue of the public tree outside of Cantona Lucca, we are aware of the tree that's under the current awning, and we are working with the forester to monitor that tree to ensure that there aren't any long-term impacts. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at council with Marnie this time? Jeff? Jeff, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I'm still not very good at this. A couple of questions for Chip and then a question for Brian. Chip, what is the status, what's the status of the permits and the insurance we have now? So the permits, I think, or the insurance or whatever expired at the end of the year, have they been renewed as of today?
No, sir, they have not been renewed, and Marnie told me just today that most of the insurance policies that we've received also timed out, and that's through private insurance, obviously, timed out at the end of the calendar year as well when the current encroachment permits expired.
So we currently have all these parklets in parking spots, and the city right now isn't particularly protected if something should happen in one of those spots?
I need to double-check that, sir. I need to double-check that.
Okay, and how do we know, you know, if a restaurant decides to participate in this sort of revised picnicking program, how do we know that they're sort of open versus closed?
Yeah, I think the distinguishing characteristic would be if the council is keen and provides direction or approves this concept of picnicking in the right-of-way in the outdoor seating areas, the distinguishing characteristic would be that they would be displaying or have tables and chairs and the proper waste receptacles within the outdoor seating areas.
So to use the example on Dolores Street, if B.C. Lette decided not to participate and Cafe Napoli decided to, there would be furniture in the Napoli parking spot, but not in the B.C. Lette parking spot, and people could buy food at either establishment, or they could bring it from home or from Monterey or PG or wherever they're coming from and eat it in the Napoli parking spot?
That's the concept as we've conceived this notion of picnicking, correct, sir?
Okay, and then kind of a related question for Brian. Usually I say his name and he pops right up.
He's there.
Here, Jeff.
Hi, Brian. So if someone, using my example before, if someone eats or gets something to eat at B.C. Lette and then walks across the street to Napoli, and then we have an issue with, you know, some health issue, they trip and fall, which is what we always hear, or something else, whose insurance policy covers the accident that happens in the Napoli parklet?
Well, that is a good question. We probably need to check with the various insurance companies that have issued certificates with this. If the council were to proceed with some type of a new or different arrangement than what you currently, well, what you did have previously, which was that the customers of the restaurant that served them the food would be limited to their, those tables where they got the food from that restaurant. But your hypothetical is somebody gets food from, let's say, Restaurant A, and then they take the food and go and eat in Parklet B that's next to Restaurant B. Would the insurance for the Restaurant B cover that incident or not? And that would be a question as to whether or not the insurance company would be prepared to issue the policy under those conditions. So that's my answer to that question.
So we would have to make sure that the insurance policies that we have issued, I would imagine the ones we had in the past all covered this because they wouldn't have, they would not have assumed that we would have this particular situation. But we would need to make sure that all the insurance policies for the next however many weeks cover foreigners, i.e. people that didn't get food at the restaurant at which they're eating, or the wine tasting shop, for example, because we still have a lot of, well, I guess presumably the wine tasting shops won't have furniture out because they're not allowed to be open. But we would need to make sure that the insurance policies would cover those situations according to the terms that we have in front of us.
Yes, that's my advice, is that if you decide to move forward, I'm going to speculate with some foundation that there's probably going to be a number of issues that will need to be further researched depending upon what direction comes from the council. So if we want to enumerate those, we could put number one would be to check to the extent that there would be insurance, whether there would be insurance that would cover the city's potential liability for a noncustomer of the restaurant who's eating, who did get their food at the restaurant that they're eating next to. And so that's an insurance question we would have to check. And not only check with the insurance companies that issued the policies for the restaurants, but also check with the city's liability carrier and check in with them and say, this is what the city, this council has directed that we look into, and we need to know from the city's insurance. The city's part of an insurance pool, technically insurance, it's liability pool. But nonetheless, I understand that there's a person that Karen can check in with and explain whatever it is, the arrangement is you all come up with as your preferred option, and see to what extent if the insurance from the restaurant didn't provide coverage to see whether or not there would be coverage under the city's policy. Because what you don't want to be is in a situation where you're not covered. I mean, the perfect world would be covered by both insurances, but the worst situation would be if for some reason the restaurant's insurance didn't cover it, and then for some reason the city's liability pool didn't cover it, then you'd be what's called bear, which means you would have exposure. So there will need to be some research done on the insurance issue, and I'll just call that, if we're going to start taking count, as the first issue that would need to be researched following whatever direction you come to tonight.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody on council, any other questions?
Yeah.
So Karen?
Yes. Are we still operating in our city under our general plan? Are we still using our general plan to guide us in our decisions?
Yes, ma'am, we certainly are. A general plan is like a constitution. Our general plan was adopted in 2003. It's been amended several times since then. General plans are long-range documents that provide general direction. State law allows us to update them four times a year. We have done updates in the past. COVID-19 has necessitated some, has allowed through the governor some flexibility on the pure application of policies and ordinances, and of course, we've we've used that to a limited degree during this period. Mayor White asked me this morning about all the extra signage that the restaurants have been permitted to employ since March of last year, since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. And my answer to him, and my answer is now to you, we have certainly allowed a lot more liberties than we would traditionally do vis-à-vis things like extra signage, accessory uses within businesses, A-frame signs, all of which are strictly prohibited under a pure application of our general plan or zoning ordinances. But again, under the authority from the governor, again, we've made some allowances in order to keep the local economy going, trying to protect people. And this is where I usually chime in and talk about those most vulnerable in our society. It's the restaurant and hospitality workers who are on the fringe of our society economically, and that played a large part, of course, in some of the allowances that we've made in the past 10 months, not the least of which was the temporary encroachment permits to allow the outdoor seating.
Karen, does that answer your question?
Somewhat. I can bring it up later at another time, if you wish.
No, if it's a question, I'd rather you get it out now.
All right, there is a section under encroachments in our planning documents, 12.32.160, and it's specifically about picnicking. And it says it is unlawful to picnic, camp, place tables, place chairs, eat, hang out things to dry on any public right-of-way sidewalk area or in any parking area. It does not apply to eating while walking like an ice cream cone, but it shall apply to eating when the eating is the primary activity. And that sort of spells out some things, and I just wondered if that was looked at when these recommendations were drawn up.
Chip, I guess that would be to you my question, do you want to add on to that? Because that was part of our parklet discussion early on, I believe.
Yes, sir, that was certainly included, and of course, you know, last spring, the mayor and I, for lack of a better term, hatched a plan to use one of the streets in our commercial district to create, you know, an area closed to vehicular traffic to allow people, again, on a temporary basis to, for lack of a better word, to picnic, to be eating in the right-of-way. And again, I don't think that we're violating our general plan by allowing, if the council chooses to, by allowing this temporary picnicking until we emerge from COVID. So that would be my response to Councilmember Forlito.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? So I guess this would be to Marnie. I do have a question. Bobby, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sure, thanks, ma'am. Well, I guess I first want to say I have about, you know, 20 questions that I could ask, you know, pertaining to what the new guidelines would look like or what they would be. But I first want to say I'm so proud to be part of a council that's willing to step out of the box, that's concerned about the health of the citizens, that's concerned about the financial health of the city, and also wants to aid these businesses that are struggling. And we're trying to give them or get them a little oxygen, but we're taking all these other things into consideration, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate you, Mayor, doing the homework that you've done, and also the questions that are being asked right now concerning the general plan, concerning the financial issues that are the problems that we may entail if we allow this stuff. So it's really great that we're having this dialogue. I guess my question is, tonight, are we asked to do a recommendation? Or are we asking for a, you know, a recommendation on guidelines? Or a thumbs up or thumbs down to allowing tables to be put into parking stalls? I'm a little, I need a little bit of clarification on that.
Bobby, if I may on that. I think the question before us is pretty simple. Should the picnicking be allowed or not? If so, and we want to change the parameters around which that could occur, give direction to staff and design, those are all our options tonight. But I think that's the big question, is do we want to go ahead and allow picnicking? Then do we have subsequent areas of concern? The sale of alcohol, the consumption of alcohol in those areas? The ability to say, is it going to be public or private only? Is it only in the streets? Or can people use the private areas? If so, what are the constraints on that? And then we've got a list of questions that we want to go through, A through J here, which are areas that staff, I think, is looking for direction, but they're making recommendations. So there is a lot of recommendations and direction, I think, that they're asking for tonight. So questions? Is that the question?
So, well, that was the question, is if we're, if we, what we decide tonight, will there be picnicking or no picnicking tomorrow? And so sort of like the situation we had with scenic, with closing scenic down. It was either, does this council have an appetite to look into this? Or do we not have any appetite at all? Is that what we're kind of doing tonight?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the situation last month was a little bit different because we were looking on a first blush basis from the perspective of a red light, green light scenario about whether we should proceed with, you know, have a dialogue about an idea. There would have been a lot more work to be done before we implemented the idea on Scenic Road. Tonight, you have both, you have the authority to direct us to implement your direction on picnicking in the right-of-way. And if, again, if you say, staff, go ahead and do this with these conditions, then we would work with the encroachment permit holders to ensure, just like Marnie's currently done, that there's a form, there's a permit that's actually issued, and of course, those are posted, had been posted on all of the, on the adjacent private property that lists the conditions under which the revocable permit, encroachment permit has been issued. So you could say, for example, you know, no alcohol, a maximum number of 10 seats. From this, you know, you could condition this picnicking tonight. I don't imagine it would happen tomorrow because the adjacent restaurant, the private property owner, would have to obtain the necessary insurance and work through our staff. So it's not a, you know, we'll quick turn it as quickly as we possibly can, given your direction, but the lion's share of the work really has to be done by the restaurateur, their insurance company, and any other conditions that you may put on it, for example, through Monterey County Health or the like.
So Mayor, this is Brian. Before I go to the public, I have something I need to add here. Am I understanding correctly that it's contemplated that the rest- Am I understanding correctly that it's contemplated that the restaurants would be setting up tables and chairs in the right-of-way to make that available? Is that right, Chip?
Yes, sir. Yeah, in their outdoor seating areas. Correct.
So if we want to make this item number two for follow-up, depending on your direction, it's my understanding that the county currently is defaulting to the state in terms of the rules on various matters, including the outdoor dining. And since, if you did have the restaurant set up, you then are creating somewhat of a nexus between the restaurant and the parklet. And it's possible, and I'm not the attorney for the state, so I can't answer this, but it is possible that the state might say that you can't do this because to do so basically is authorizing outdoor dining. That we can say that it's in a public area, like, you know, it's, we, our response to that would be, it's like a park. And that it, since they legally, in my opinion, could eat in the right-of-way, provided that there's, you know, the safety precautions taken. But the issue that I'm spotting for you now is whether or not the state would view this as outdoor dining. If you have the restaurant somehow involved with the parklet, like if somebody goes to a park to eat, they're not eating at a table that the restaurant put out there. They're eating it, you know, whatever, if you have picnic tables or, you know, they bring their own chairs or whatever. So to the extent that you do have restaurant involvement in the parking lot through setting up tables or bussing tables or anything like that, you're starting to get closer to, you know, outdoor dining. So I'll spot this as issue number two. Remember, issue number one was the insurance. I would call this the second issue, and it'll depend upon what your direction is. But my advice to you would be that, depending upon what your direction would be, is to check with the state to make sure that this isn't going to be an issue with regards to the order on outdoor dining.
All right. That flagged. I appreciate that. Any other questions? So Marnie, I would ask you regarding the ability to consume alcohol in these spots. That I thought you said was an ABC issue. Am I correct on that?
So when we, when we started this program, when it was undertakeout-only, we actually imposed the restriction on public consumption of alcohol. That only opened up when table service was allowed to resume. And that does require both approval by the state as well as a permit from ABC.
So what you're saying is this is something we should ask the ABC if they would permit? If we wanted to allow consumption of alcohol in a parklet as a picnicking experience?
Yes, like we would need to ask them if that is covered under the existing permits or if a new permit would be required.
So it sounds like that may be item number three, then there needs some clarification. All right. That noted. Is there any other questions of staff by council members at this time before I open up to public comment? I don't see anybody. Open it up for public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public comment on this item specifically. It's a three-minute limitation on that testimony. If you'd state your name for the record, I'd appreciate it. Let's commence the discussion of the questioning. Thank you.
Hey, remember, star six will unmute your device. Please keep your device muted if you're not speaking, if the mayor is not called on you.
Let's go, guys. You're never known to be shy, this industry.
Hello. And this is, hi. This is Jack Delonte. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jack.
Yes, Jack. Go ahead.
Hi. Hi, all. How's everybody doing? Hope all well. Hey, I had a question for you. And I might have, just because I came in maybe 15 minutes after this all started, I may have missed this. But you were looking, everything I've heard to date, to now is all about parklets and public areas. And I didn't know if you were covering any issues with picnicking for restaurants. And naturally, I'd love to hear what's going on in terms of wine tasting as well in private courtyards and private areas, which doesn't have the same regulation as the public areas. And I didn't know if you covered that or missed that, or is that something else that's going to be discussed?
Thank you, Jack. We'll take that question, the answer to that after public testimony. Thank you. Next speaker.
There are lots of people on the call.
And I don't, I don't want to have to get to where we limit public testimony because people didn't testify in a prompt manner. So let's get going here.
Hi. Can you hear? This is Jeannie McCullough. Hi, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to quickly make a comment. My concern about, I've taken food out from several restaurants in town and have been offered the option of taking a cocktail or a glass of wine in a paper cup with my takeout. And I asked, and I love the restaurants, and I feel for this time, it's terrible. I know they're all trying to survive, and I, there's nothing more I want than everybody to survive this terrible pandemic we're going through. But it's a great concern as far as the liability for the city for people to be walking around with paper cups with alcoholic beverages, I would think, on the sidewalk if something happens. I mean, the liability, I don't think our insurance covers that because it's illegal in the state of California. Correct in that. But anyway, so also you can't take alcohol in your car in a paper cup. So I, of course, did not purchase that option. But I just wonder, because I did hear in your discussion that that is still an option. So I know they're struggling, and if people buy a bottle of wine and take it home or take it to the beach or sit in one of these parklets and enjoy their takeout with the wine, that sounds fine. Or if they just want to buy a glass and take it to the parklet or a cocktail. But to take it down the street on the sidewalk, you know, and it just, or in the car, it seems like that presents a real liability for the city and restaurants. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Next speaker.
Hi, this is Mike Saifan.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Mike and Michelle here. First of all, honorable Mayor and City Council members, Michelle and I would like to thank all you for allowing the restaurants for the outside dining parks. It is a privilege that we all appreciate. I just have a couple of questions for the council. If people from other restaurants fill my space, how do I tell my customers there's no room for them? That's number one. Number two, do I have to hire extra help, which is at a premium right now, to make sure of social distancing from other people that come? And no alcohol to be consumed on the premise? And then I have to sanitize them? And then, number three, trash removal is very, very expensive. Okay, so I'm going to have to put other people's trash into my receptacles and pay extra for it. And number four, if a party of 10 happened to walk by, they got food at Restaurant A, and come to my place, and there's all 38 people there, what am I going to do? Am I going to tell them, you can't come in, and I'm going to have to have somebody outside? It, unless you step in our shoes, it's easy to police people from a room. But in the public, I think it's a little tougher than you think. And we tell people when they buy it, we have it posted, you can't drink alcohol outside. Yet, I see it happen. I see it happen a lot. So I don't know. These are just questions we have for you. But we do appreciate what you have done for the restaurants in Carmel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Wow.
I find this hard to believe that there's nobody else. Normally, I'd want to encourage a lot of others.
Richard Kreitman here. Hello?
Go ahead, Richard.
No one else will speak. I'll always speak. Welcome, council. Thank you.
That we know. And we appreciate.
Thank you. I'm all for it. Whatever we can do to get the restaurants more business, I am for it. And as a retailer downtown, the parklets kept the businesses of the city alive, the outdoor dining, because it brought people in, good people. Most people were, you know, they were good people from the region and around the Bay Area. And you have a lot of questions here about liability. I would think if you're taking over the parklets as city property, then it's city insurance. I don't, but that's, that's a detail that our attorney will look into. But I fully support it. My friends in the restaurant industry will have to weigh in on how it would operate for them. But based on the last caller, you know, it's basically free, it's there for the use. The provision of tables and chairs from a given business may complicate it, but maybe the city temporarily takes ownership of the chairs and tables. They become city picnic tables donated by the restaurants in the city-owned parklets. But I have confidence in your ability to creatively solve the issues involved. And I hope we can get people back out, eating on our streets and patronizing our restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Good to hear from you. Next speaker.
Dave. Hello. This is Jack Delonte again. May I say one more comment on the public space?
Actually, Jack, no, you can't. I hate to be such a cuny, but you got one bite at the apple.
Okay, okay. Got it.
Parker Logan.
Parker.
Good evening, everyone. I can touch base a little bit on the ABC. If you, if you acquire an ABC permit, you're allowed to do two things. You can allow your expanded footprint, which would be your parklet, to have your specific customers only drink in your specific parklet. Or you can serve them to-go, and then they have to be served in enclosed containers, not like a cup with a straw in it. It has to be a sealed container that would be legal to put in your car and drive with and not be an open container. I've spoken with them about this post the recent shutdown. And there's many other communities in the state of California that are allowing picnicking. And it doesn't have to be, you know, it's not really rocket science. Let us open up. We serve on paper or biodegradable containers. If they serve alcohol, they have to be in sealed containers. And, you know, we just get to go willy-nilly, walking all over. It's almost like we're open, but we're not because we're not operating the same table-side service. We ask people to buck their own tables and use the trash receptacles and to leave in an orderly manner. But you can't have people coming from one restaurant, A, to Restaurant B to dump all their crap. And that doesn't make any sense. But it's, but it's happening. So maybe investigate what San Luis Obispo is doing or Bakersfield's doing or Sacramento's doing, because it's happening everywhere. I think maybe everybody's overthinking all these rules. And if their goal is, we want to help the restaurants open to eliminate, I don't know, the thousands of people that go down to the beach and throw litter and garbage and trash everywhere down there, and they're picnicking in the parklet anyway, whether they're allowed to or not. I mean, every, if you drive up and down Ocean Avenue, there's people standing right on the railings, sitting everywhere. The trash cans are overflowing. It's ridiculous. If you let us cut our tables and chairs and our trash cans out and serve in the proper recept, you know, to-go containers and the proper alcoholic beverage containers and just, you know, police our customers to let them know that they can enjoy this parklet temporarily while they enjoy their meal and to please throw their stuff away and to provide the receptacles rather than just go anywhere they want. I think it'd be a much easier, you know, scenario. I caught on the call late, but at the end of it, it sounded like there was something about heaters. I mean, we can provide umbrellas to protect people from the sun or the wind or the rain or whatever other kind of weather gets thrown at them. But we can't put heaters out to provide warmth? That seems kind of petty. I think there should be no problem with, you know, if we're going to let people enjoy, you know, having to be outdoors, they could at least be warm. I don't know why that would be an issue. I hear my buzzer going off, and that's why I want to thank you. And I hope you're very thoughtful in thinking how we can help, not how we can continue to restrict.
Thank you, Parker. Thank you. Next speaker.
You know, I don't see anyone really muting or unmuting. I'd like to start a timer, Mayor, just to maybe give a little bit of time.
Oh, maybe I can go? I don't know. There's no. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I have a phone number ending in 37.
Hello. 0037?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. I'll go ahead. Hi. My name's Amanda Lovett. I actually, I haven't spoken in front of City Council in a long time. I'm the owner of the Vagabond House. So just as Bobby said, I'd like to say thank you for, you know, continuously thinking outside the box. But I really would have to say that this is one of those times that I would say don't. And that's because honestly, there is, really, right now, we have one common enemy. And that's COVID. And I'm really very surprised that we're not talking more about COVID. And if the state of California is saying that, you know, we shouldn't have outside dining because it's unsafe, then why is Carmel saying that we should have outside dining? And maybe, I don't know, maybe we're going about this backwards. Maybe if we were safer about COVID, then maybe, you know, we'd be able to open up fully sooner. Because honestly, it's just getting worse and worse and worse. And I was drove by the beach this weekend, and it was packed. You know, and I really just have to say, like, why didn't Carmel close the beach this weekend? Like we were doing over the summer. It was an 80-degree weekend, holiday weekend. So I know we want to open up. I want to open up. I want to open my business. But the reality is, this just isn't the time. Because there are 400,000 deaths in the United States, and the state of California is one of the worst states. And now we've got this super-spreading variation, and we want to continue to limp along. I think really what we need to do is follow the laws, follow the mandates to the T so that we can reopen properly. We are so close. We're at the finish line. The vaccines are coming out. You know, the state has the CDC behind them. Maybe we should follow what the state says. You know, instead of trying to cut corners, maybe we should band together as a community, residents, businesses, so that we keep our employees, our neighbors, our families safe. Normally, I'm really very pro-business about this stuff, but this is really more about safety. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate it.
No problem.
There was someone with the phone number ending in 44. It looked like they wanted to speak.
Hello?
Go ahead. What's your name?
Hi, this is Ashley with the number that ended 44.
Go ahead, Ashley.
This is Ashley from Pangea Grill.
Okay, go ahead.
I first wanted to start and say thank you so much to the council and the board for having a second meeting to touch base about picnicking. And the consideration is super-important for businesses right now, seeing that the extension has just gone longer. I will have to slightly disagree with Amanda from the Vagabond. There's a lot of science right now that shows that a very small percentage, and I mean, less and I mean, less than 5% of transmission of COVID comes from restaurants. I think that personally, as a business owner, whether you be in clothing or hotel or restaurant, if you don't feel comfortable being open, then don't be open. And that's fine, there's no hard feelings either way. I think having picnicking helps restaurants a ton. There are restaurants around the county, including Carmel, not Carmel by the Sea, who have been doing it for the last four weeks. And I can agree with Parker, if you guys want to do a sealed alcoholic beverage, just like Santa Cruz does, to make it more safe for people to take alcohol when they order food, I can get on board with that as well. But having the extra tables and chairs back outside really helps business in a small way in the sense of when people walk by and they see people eating your food, it encourages more people to order food, and that's what we want. We need that walk-by business. I mean, yes, we're in the middle of COVID still, but there's supposed to be no non-essential travel. Yet I'm sure you guys see every single day that Carmel on the weekends is completely packed. So here we are shutting down restaurants, saying, no, you can't have picnicking or outdoor dining. But also, there's no non-essential travel. But please come to Carmel by the Sea and fill up our town. We just can't really help you with anything. And as far as the trash, the trash has been crazy. But to allow picnicking outside, we are more than happy to have more trash cans outside instead of letting it all fill up at the library. And I'm sure you guys saw at the library, there must have been 80 people sitting in a small square corner. We can eliminate that by allowing picnicking and to keep the village alive. That's what restaurants are here for, right, as a whole, to keep our village alive. Anyways, that's all I wanted to say, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, it's David Fink.
Go ahead, David.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, hi, City Council. Good to hear from you, all of you tonight and everybody on the call. I just want to come from the perspective of being in the hospitality business for more than 40 years and for the hospitality business being so important to the lifeblood of Carmel. By the time this next shelter in place from the state ends, many of us will have been closed for more than 130 days, maybe even longer than that, because we don't know when this order is going to end. I heard some good news from Supervisor Lopez today that there's something on the horizon. But we all know that our supervisors have been pretty quiet on outdoor dining. What I would encourage you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, to do is do anything in your power to get hospitality back on their feet. If it's picnicking, that is a start. People are furloughed, they're laid off, they're suffering, businesses are closing. And we have to do everything we can to keep hospitality going in Carmel. And you have done that. Again, with all due respect to Amanda, Amanda, you should read the LA and Sacramento and San Diego lawsuits, which I have done. And our city attorney should read those lawsuits. The medical briefs in those lawsuits irrefutably show there's no scientific evidence that outdoor dining spreads COVID-19. Dr. Galley said that publicly. Dr. Galley's been subpoenaed by the CRA. He's testifying next week. We need to do anything we can to get picnicking or outdoor dining open again. I talked to Mayor Potter about this today. I hope he is working with the other mayors and the other jurisdictions to push forward on the supervisors to work with Dr. Marino to get outdoor dining open again, not just picnicking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Next speaker.
Hello. May I speak?
Sure, go ahead.
Hello, hi, this is Stephen, this is our Little Swiss Cafe. I'd like, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys. Just been listening to the entire conversation. I'd like to reiterate what David Fink just spoke about very pointedly and very properly. I'd like to, just on the side of things, I think if everybody in the business community and the city council came together to understand, I think we would come to a good agreement. Because I think safety is a concern for health. Vitality for the economic, for the restaurants and for the businesses that bring people into town is the utmost importance. If we all come together, if the city council would stand up behind the businesses and we could come together, so far as what Amanda said, taking the trash away would become the responsibility of the businesses because we have to have that lifeline of economics into the area. And we've been very safe. All the restaurants I've seen so far, that I know of, have been compliant. And we have not had any outbreaks. And as David Fink said, Amanda, the science behind the facts need to be addressed or at least opened up and understood. And if everybody is responsible, we can come to, if the city council would forefront our request to the county. But I guess the county is a problem. I don't know where that lies, what the city can and cannot do. But if we all come together, we have to solve this. So I want to again reiterate what David Fink said, please. Thank you, that's all I had to say.
Thank you much, appreciate it. Next speaker. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Gabriel Doras calling in.
Go ahead, Gabriel.
Thank you very much. Again, I do want to reiterate some of the points that have been made. I want to be clear, I'm so thankful to the city for even entertaining these ideas and trying to help us keep our businesses afloat in this challenging environment here. I think that, I speak for a lot of the hospitality industry when I say that our concern, sometimes above the survival of our own business, has been people's health and safety. And I think we all understand that people's health and safety are a crux in us being able to keep any part of our businesses open going forward. So with that in mind, I would like to just address something that I had spoke about before, which is, like David said, that there is very little to no evidence that there's any transmissions going on outside. And I'd also like to point out that I think whenever you're trying to police or control a behavior from the general public that goes against their natural inclination, and all of us have an inclination to gather together to visit with each other and be social creatures. If there's no viable outlet or none of the safest outlet, I would say, available to them, then it kind of pushes things to the brink underground or to the wrong places. And I think that we've seen that with, you know, COVID spreading primarily in people's homes because there is no place for them to gather outdoors in a public space that's somewhat controlled. And I think that that's maybe caused more health problems for us than actually allowing people to be outdoors. I think we've seen that with the trash builds up at the beach or as we've walked around town and seen people leaning against every available flat surface and wall in front of businesses and places and trying to find a place to eat. So I'm a big believer in allowing people the safest possible alternative, which I believe to be picnicking or outdoor dining, so that the business owners are going to kind of help police things, help enforce those rules, and hopefully help ultimately reduce the spread of COVID-19 because of it. And I know that may seem counterintuitive to some, but I really do think that that's the case. So again, I appreciate your time, and please consider that. And I'd like to add one other thing, which is, myself and I think some other restaurants in town don't have parklets, so I would encourage you to allow us some limited seating in our patios as well. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate your participation. Is there anybody else?
Hi, this is Dawn Galante.
Go ahead.
Hi, I want to thank the mayor and the council for all your efforts. But I did want to put on the record that since wine tasting rooms, we're also struggling, as you can imagine. And we feel that it would be really difficult for our parklets to be used in this scenario for a lot of reasons, one being that we're on limited staff. So for us to have to worry about restaurants' trash to pick up and clean up and, you know, we don't have furniture out there, but we have wine barrels as part of our parklet. And people already stand at them and use them, and we already are cleaning up a little bit. So if you include our parklet with the restaurants, we're going to be under a lot of pressure without the staff. And we would have this liability. We'd be insuring something that we can't even be open to enjoy. So just wanted to put that on record, that we would be excluded and we could put a sign in our parklet saying that it's closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Next speaker. Britt, looks like you got somebody trying to get in.
Yeah, I've got someone with the phone number ending in 22. Are you trying to speak or do you need to mute your device?
Yeah, hi.
Okay, go ahead, ending in 78?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mira. I'm speaking to Pangea Grill in Carmel, of course, Carmel, Pangea Grill. So... So, okay, everybody say is Korea is a very good role model. And I've been following up, since I'm Korean, I'm following up about Korea, about how they handle COVID station, situation. And in Korea, of course, they never shut down, especially restaurants. We are adult, and there is always a people not responsible and being dumb. But we cannot control 100% whole popularity. And, but majority has a very good common sense. And majority adult is very aware about how dangerous COVID is. But, you know, in Korea, never shut down. And same thing in here too. I mean, so if people are not responsible, they shouldn't go out or they afraid of, they shouldn't go out. But all the restaurant owner, we take everything very serious. We clean, we sanitize, and, you know, it's not like we're taking it's a, I mean, a lot of people think restaurant owner is criminal. But, you know, we take things very seriously. And, but just like I say, we cannot control 100% of people who being dumb. And, you know, since the last four months, all the to-go, I don't see anything different. Actually, having a parklet, people eating there and have a better spacing out than just sitting in the middle of the street and all the dump that we have to deal with. And also, it's like, very, like, almost like, almost a no percentage about in the outside restaurant has a spread COVID, actually. Thanksgiving and Christmas, I bet there are more people gathering inside. Make the to-go, they go home, gathering inside. Actually, that's 70% more dangerous than what's outside having food. So, you know, it's, yeah, we all, we all try to survive. And if there is, you know, 100%, some kind of like approved, we spreading COVID outside restaurant, whatever, then yeah, I will, I will listen. But there is a very, very, almost like a no chance. Almost like, I wouldn't say almost no chance, but there was a very small chance and have, but just walking around, we all taking a chance as well. So thanks for making this meeting. But what I say is like, I'm following in Korea because everybody talking about Korea's, you know, how they handle, yet they never shut down. They never shut down.
Thank you, that indicates three minutes are up. I appreciate your testimony, thank you. Anybody else? Britt, what are you thinking?
I'm looking through, ending in 03, is that you?
That's me.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Chris Sanders. Hello, honorable mayor, city council, and city staff. Thank you very much for the hard work that you do. I want to first say thank you very much, Amanda Lovett, for sort of falling on the grenade, as it were. I am certain that the numbers have jumped in California per positive cases of COVID and also deaths. However, I will say as the person who lives downtown that when the restaurants were operating their parklets, as they managed them, they set up, they managed the hygiene, they took care of the noise, the service and the cleanup with very little cost to the city. I felt that that was a program that was much more elegant and effective. I'm concerned about opening these parklets to picnicking only because I think that through the miracle of social media, that people will show each other how to gain this system. They'll, of course, buy their food wherever they want or bring it, and they'll go to the best parklets. One of the early callers had mentioned that he was concerned that his restaurant would fill up before he even had a chance to take care of his customers. But any rate, so if there's any way at all that we can work with the Health Department to get the restaurants back in charge of the service and the hygiene and the setup and cleanup of their parklet, I would be much in favor of that. I hope that's the direction we can go. Thank you again, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. Next speaker.
Hi, this is Teresa Holman, can you hear me?
Yes, Teresa, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Potter, and good evening, City Council. I would just like to say, I'm new to the Carmel community, but what I have noticed from reading The Pinecone and reading The Chamber newsletters lately is one thing for us to look at is the COVID rate in Carmel by the Sea is zero right now. And I think that one of the reasons that it is zero is because we're leading by example and we are, we're following what's suggested. And we are keeping everything as closed down as we possibly can. And as far, I've heard some comments about the trash is worse around the beach. And I'm part of a cleanup crew that cleans once a week. And the days that I don't clean, I actually walk scenic. And I've gotten to know quite a few of the homeowners that are on scenic. And the trash doesn't seem to be any worse than it was before. So I would just like to differ that the trash has been escalated since the restaurants have had to close their, close their outside dining. And to just please take a look at the COVID rates. And I really believe that the Carmel by the Sea COVID rate is lower because we are doing what's suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Anybody else?
Yeah, looks like someone wants to talk.
Hi. Hello? Hi, I'm Sarah Cook, from Cafe Carmel.
Go ahead, Sarah. Sarah, come on in.
Sorry. I just wanted to clarify about the insurance side of things and also the interact, particularly with regard to staff, having the restaurants or cafe owners having to provide the staff to police the parklets. And what would happen is patrons of other establishments or who, people who bring their food in from outside or from the store end up having an altercation with the staff about leaving trash or not about, you know, gathering in big groups than we're allowed. So that sort of issue. And what would be the liability in that instance? Would it be down to the person whose parklet it is? Would it be the city or would it be the person's responsibility? In other words, I'm concerned about the safety of the staff of having to police and clear the parklets as well, especially with other people coming in from other places. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, there was someone with a phone number ending in 99. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Mayor, I just want to give that a little bit of time.
I appreciate that.
Seannick Road resident here. That's false information. The trash cans are overflowing.
Parky, you've already spoken, my friend. Thank you.
Okay, there was a gentleman. Maybe they changed their mind, ending in nine-nine.
There he goes. Go ahead.
Ending in nine-nine, did you want to speak? There's also a phone number ending in zero-eight. Looks like they are unmuted. Did you want to speak?
All right, we're running out of three minutes here, either one of you.
Let me go ahead and start as a timer, mayor, so we can give them a little bit of time. And then if we don't get anyone, you can make your decision.
All righty.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Nine-nine.
Okay, nine-nine, Rich Pepe here. Good evening.
Go ahead, Rich.
Oh, finally, I was trying to unmute myself for about an hour. Sorry. I think the first thing the mayor and council have to ask themselves is, is why? Why now? Is it to alleviate the problem of the trash? And really the unsightly scene of people standing up and eating in parklets or off the hood of their car or trash down at the breach or in the library foyer there. And if that's the case, I'm all for this idea. I think the insurance issues, we have a $2 million policy. I'm sure that could be alleviated. A couple of callers mentioned check with Sacramento. Well, Sacramento is open for dining. I don't know if anybody heard that before, but they are open for dining, as is Tahoe. So it's not just here that has an issue. One, one thing, if you can allow putting up to 16 feet in a parklet, I would recommend not allowing tables on the sidewalk at this moment. But the last thing for me is, and I think everything else with the heaters and the alcohol, you can figure that out. But not allowing restaurants that have their own patios to use them, I think you should discuss very seriously. So for instance, Gabe Duris was on, he doesn't have a parklet. So is he out of business? Is, yeah, he doesn't have a parklet and he has a patio. LaPlaya Hotel does not have a parklet. Seven and Dolores does not have a parklet. So you'd really be denying these folks from reopening even. Any of the restaurants in Carmel Plaza, which pays a lot of taxes, the Plaza, don't have their own space. Are they not allowed to open because they don't have parklets on city property? Maybe it's a, if you, let's say with Kenny at Village Corner, he has a parklet and a patio. Maybe you have to choose one or the other. But to just, just flat out deny people that have, that have spaces, I think needs to be discussed a little bit better embedded. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the, the interest. And in the advent that one of the items here is to help hospitality, I think that while I was on the fence about this all week, I think I'm leaning toward asking for your approval. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pepe. I believe oh-eight wanted to speak.
Looks like there's someone with a phone number ending in oh-eight. So I want to kind of give that a little bit of time. Ending in three-three, I cannot unmute you.
Hello?
Yep.
Hello?
Hi, you have, you have a speaker on in the background that you'll have to turn off, that you're getting feedback. So it appears we've got a couple of people, mayor, who are trying to speak and may end up calling back. But ending in three-three, I can't unmute you. If you're having an issue, you might have to hang up and call back in. Mayor will be patient. Okay, thirty-three did drop off, so hopefully he'll come back. Let's see. Ending in zero-eight? Nope, you just dropped off. So mayor, I just want to give them a little bit.
No problem. I agree. Don't want to cut off public debate, but.
Some people have been on.
Mayor, can you hear me now? This is Todd.
Yes, Todd, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor, this is Todd Tyson. I agree with most of the people they've spoken today. The one thing that I'm concerned about is, like Mike Sapon said from Shucks, is that, you know, they've been sanitized and they sanitize those, all the restaurants do everything all the time when they have outdoor dining. Now they don't have that. So I don't see how the, where the safety factor comes into play with the allowing the outdoor picnicking. Now, at the same time, I want whatever we need to do right now for our restaurants to do business and get more people into town. I guess my biggest thing, I think that Gabe or someone else mentioned also, I think my biggest thing I'd like to do is for, try to get the, to the county supervisors to allow us to do outdoor dining. Because we, I'm sorry, I think that, you know, our restaurants did it some of the best anybody, any place could do it. If you look at Florida, yeah, they have no masks, they have less COVID cases per 100,000. But they have, but they have full restaurants every place. You go to New York and they have to have masks, but they, they can do the outdoor parking, but they virtually make an indoor area outside, which doesn't make any sense either. So I think how we've been doing it with our, you know, two or two and a half sides on our spaces has been very safe for our, for our visitors and for our, you know, staff members of the restaurants and for all, all of town. So I think that'd be my, my, my biggest hope is if we could somehow try to get our supervisors to work with us and our health director. And, you know, if we have to go against the state, maybe we go against the state. There's been a lot of other jurisdictions around the state that have gone against them. I know there's plenty of restaurateurs on here. I believe I just heard yesterday that someone told me there is a lawsuit or one or two lawsuits pending against the state from the Restaurant Association in California. And maybe we just get ahead of it or at least be really ready for it when our numbers are lower and, and we go from there. But I, I want to know what's the safest thing. And I just don't know that if putting a bunch of picnic, you know, putting a bunch of people out there and like having the garbage there and having it tough for the restaurant that is in front. I don't know if that's going to really help us a whole lot, but if it will, if they all want to do that, then I'm for it. But I think we need to get back to the outdoor dining, to be honest. So thanks.
Thank you, Todd. So anybody else?
Ending in six-four, yes.
Yes, hi, this is Federico Schapaket. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I just want to thank you for making an effort to try to save the business here in Carmel and the restaurant. We are the new, the new kid in town and have experienced two closure in less than a year. And it's been extremely difficult for our employees. I often get calls from our employees to figure out when, when they're going to come back to work and what they're going to do. So a couple of things to keep in mind, regardless of what the decision is going to be, picnicking or outdoor, in the scenario that we have now, we're giving work or we will be giving work to the back of the house employee. And there is a limitation also on the amount of business because there has not been a big flow of business in Carmel. The streets are empty most of the time during the week. And on the weekend, like last weekend, it was beautiful day and there were a lot of people. And yes, the trash can were overflowing, everything like that. But I think at this juncture, being that we have a vaccine in place and people are starting to get vaccinated and there is a sort of an idea that this eventually will come to an end. It will be a big effort to allow businesses, the restaurant, to operate in some sort of form. I think that Carmel needs to come around and see the light at the end of the tunnel and make business work and succeed. We are a part of the community. We want everybody to be safe. And I think there is a really wish from everybody to get back on our feet. So I just want to thank you for the effort that you're doing and trying to support the restaurant and the business in town. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Federico. Anybody else?
Hi, this is Lydia from East Ridge Bossier.
Hi, Lydia, go ahead.
Hi, yes, I would like to vote to go back to outdoor dining. There's no scientific proof that that was not working and that people were transmitting COVID. Also, they have it in Paso Robles, they have it in Sacramento. I vote that we go back to the outdoor dining. Picnicking would be interesting. I don't think it's very easy to tackle that. Thank you very much. Let's go back to outdoor dining. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia. Next speaker.
Phone number ending in six-four, did you speak already?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to mute your device. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and start the timer again.
Three minutes, what do you think?
Well, I was thinking more like a minute, just to give some people some time to.
I appreciate that, Britt. I didn't want to be so harsh.
I, I'll be the bad guy, sorry. But, you know, you are in charge, so.
Well, I think we pretty much run the gamut. We have apparently 50 people still on. Seems like we've heard from most of them. So the last call, is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? If so, please unmute. Here we go. Good.
This is Bashar from Demetra. Just to make it quick, I really appreciate you all. I appreciate City Council and Mr. Mayor. We can see all the efforts that you're making to, to support us and we really appreciate that. And you can get and feel the pain in everybody's voice. And I know you get it, so, and I know you're going to make the right decision on that. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your optimism. I appreciate it. Shar, per up here, there you go. All right, Britt, what do you think? One more minute?
Once he started, it had been about 30 seconds, so maybe we just go another 30 and maybe that's a, maybe that's the magic number for people getting their devices unmuted.
Sounds reasonable.
Star six again will unmute your device. Mayor, that is 30 seconds.
All right, dead note that I'm going to close the public comment period on this item. Bring it back to council. Chip, I know there was several questions asked by the public. I'm sure you've been keeping copious notes, so if you could reply to those questions, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, let me take a whack and then we can get, we can get Marnie in here as well. You know, one, I think, I think one of the most relevant questions that was asked was toward the end of public comment, Mr. Mayor. And, and the question was, why now? And let, let me be very, very clear. This, this picnicking potential solution is, is our attempt to disassociate with the outright prohibition by the state and county on outdoor dining. So let me say it again. We, we believe that the notion of picnicking, the way that we've outlined it, the way that we're trying to do it, won't violate the shelter at home. So, you know, we, we're not scientists, we're not physicians, not, we're not epidemiologists. We're trying to get businesses back open to, to a limited degree. So our solution is to use the right-of-way as an area where anybody can enjoy some food, regardless of where it comes from. And this is, this is our attempted solution. Mr. Galante asked whether this would cover private areas or wine tasting or bars? No. Those, those are specifically called out as prohibited in the state order. And, you know, again, what our solution here is to use the public right-of-way as an interim solution for picnicking. And so, you know, nothing else. So that's, that's our recommendation to you tonight. Ms. McCullough asked about walking around with alcohol. Chief Tomasi's on the, on the call. You, you can't walk around with an open bottle of, of alcohol or a cocktail, alcohol, a cocktail and consume it. That's, that's illegal, you know, on our laws as well as with state law. The one, the one, the one permitted area is Carmel Beach. So you can go down there and enjoy a, you know, a glass of wine or a bottle of wine or a can of beer or what have you. That, that is actually specifically called out in our, in our, our LCP and our, and our zoning ordinance. And then Mr. Sapon, you know, talked about no room for customers, the prohibition on alcohol, the necessity to, to perhaps maintain someone else's trash. And what happens if a big party comes to your restaurant and your outdoor seating is all filled? We don't, we don't have a solution for that. Again, the, the, the vision here is to use the right-of-way as a park. I.e., it's not, it's no longer dedicated to the adjacent, the adjacent business owner through the encroachment permit process. With the exception is, we are going to obligate you to have insurance. The, you know, one of the questions that came up was, you know, whose insurance is going to cover it? Well, our recommendation to you is, it's, it's not the cities. We're, we're, we feel like we're, again, stepping out to do something for the businesses. And so the quid pro quo, the, the quote portion of it is, we'll allow this and then, and then the obligation is now put on the restaurant to protect us, to protect the city, to protect the city coffers from the potential for a lawsuit. Mr. Sanders asked about, well, he talked about gaming the system and getting the health department involved. I can assure you, Mr. Sanders, that the mayor and I and other council members and my staff are consistently meeting with our, our district supervisors, District Five Supervisor Mary Adams, the newly elected District Four Supervisor Wendy Root Askew is having weekly meetings for elected officials, all elected officials and all senior staff members to hear about the rollout of the vaccine and what they're doing with their own health director and, and the state. So again, the, the communication, the, the conversation continues to happen. Ms. Holman asked about the trash. We had three, we had two staff members on this holiday weekend for, for four or five hours of Saturday, Sunday and Monday of the holiday weekend. We had beautiful weather. We had people visiting for the day. We had people that were apparently essential travelers staying at our ends. The trash was overwhelming in spite of the fact that we had staff here. The one mistake that I made was I did not view this as a typical holiday weekend and, and order multiple cubic yard dumpsters and place them at Del Mar and along Seannick like we traditionally do for holiday weekends. So the trash has been unintended consequence of all the, of all the to-go food. It was Ms. Cook who asked about, about who's going to cover the insurance. And again, I just want to reiterate that it's, that it's not, not the city. And then I, I think there was a question, you know, the, the question was, or maybe the statement was the we. Again, the we that we're proposing that would be allowed under this picnicking solution are the restaurants. Not any, again, I think I said this earlier, not any of the other business types that have been specifically drawn out by the county and state, including wine tasting rooms, including wine tasting and including bars. So again, those areas were specifically identified in, in the December order, which was renewed just about a week and a half ago. So again, I, I, I thank everyone for their comments. We, we too want to get businesses back open. We also want to keep our residents safe. My police department was vaccinated this week. Our paramedics and our fire department were vaccinated. We are continuing to push to have more of the vaccine shipped to Monterey County. We're working with our. County, we're working with our partners at the local hospitals. Chief Tomasi is trying to open a clinic, vaccination clinic here in the Village. Chief Panholzer from Monterey Fire, our fire department is working on that as well. We're doing our noble best. But again, this solution we view as perhaps a Band-Aid or a temporary solution until we are open, until we are able to reopen in a meaningful way. And until that time, the mayor's committee on ad hoc, the mayor's ad hoc committee on outdoor seating will meet. The mayor is going to expand that group and make it, you know, a public setting so we can talk about the long-term potential for outdoor seating. So, Mr. Mayor, I think that answers the questions that I took. I did take some pretty good notes, but I would turn to Ms. Waffle to see if there's anything I missed, sir.
Good job, Chip, I appreciate it. Marnie, any follow-up concerns or questions answered?
No, Mayor, the Chip covered it all very well. Thank you.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for deliberation.
I had a couple of things. Chip did cover the great majority of issues, there's a couple that I'd want to mention. The point that I made earlier about the restaurants should not be involved with the parklets in terms of setting up tables and such, and if we're going to allow that, we would need to check in with the state. Remember, I called that issue number two. Within that area, I would say, besides the tables, if the owners of the restaurants become involved in the parklet in other manners, and I made some notes, with heaters, umbrellas, trash pickup, sanitation, you know, those kinds of things where they're exercising some degree of control or involvement with the park, then that could be problematic. And that's the reason why I had recommended that on issue number two, that being check in with the state to make sure that whatever it is you all come up with is something that would be consistent with their restrictions. The other point I wanted to make is, in terms of gatherings, if tables are going to be put out there and it's allowed, and the state says that's okay, they would need to be six feet apart to maintain social distancing. Gatherings are not permitted, so there would be a need to avoid large groups of people. And so the table shouldn't be, for example, pushed together to create, you know, a table for 12 people who may not be all living in the same household. So those are my comments, I thought I should supplement what I heard with those statements.
So Brian, to those quasi-questions or areas of concern, you know, my understanding is that the county has interpreted this vague spot in the ordinance, come over the order coming out from the state, and they're not enforcing it, why wouldn't we ask them what they consider to be acceptable furniture in the right-of-way?
Well, actually, some of the comments that I've shared with you, I did obtain from the county. So I'm not sure, when you say that the county is not concerned, the county, I know, defaults to the state in terms of...
Unfortunately.
Yes. So it wouldn't be a need to check in with the county because what we would need to do is check with the state, because the state is the one that has issued the restrictions. And so if, whatever it is you propose, I am recommending that someone contact the state and say, this is what's being proposed, describe it, and make sure that it's not going to be in violation of the state order.
All right, appreciate those items. I bring it back to council after Brian supplied, any other areas of concern? I would like to kind of frame this discussion originally around, are we or are we not going to expand or go ahead and consider permitting outdoor dining in the parklets? So if we can frame the discussion around that, I think that would be helpful, rather than just having sort of a circular debate. We could probably maybe consider a motion to the effect that we would consider it, and then go ahead and have discussions about allowing it in parklets, approved siding, or are we going to go let public and private, then we can take a look at the actual recommended conditions or restrictions and possible staff recommendations. So...
Mayor, I would make the motion that we can explore it, as long as that motion doesn't mean that we're going to do it. We can explore it, we can get some recommendations, we can understand what the insurance issues are, we can understand what the state wants, we can see how this would play out, because I have tremendous concerns about, you know, everything that was spoken today. I listened to every word, as we all did, and I think that we're all concerned with the public safety, and we're all concerned with the lifeblood of the businesses, but we all may have different philosophies on how to go about that. And so I would love to hear, I would maybe meet with our ad hoc committee and discuss this, how's it going to look, get these answers from the state, and then move forward with it. I think it's an important enough issue that we should definitely discuss it further, but I'm not ready to make a decision tonight about whether we should or shouldn't.
All right, council, what do you think? Carrie?
Well, it's, this is, once again, we're in a tough position.
Welcome to Carmel.
Yeah. Phew, I don't know about you guys, but I'm getting tired too. So part of what we're facing here is the fact that when we said no to having any picnicking in parklets, we're finding out there's some unintended consequences to that, that people are gathering in open spaces, the beach, the library, and fortunately, they are eating in places that are not sanitary. That has me concerned, you know, they're eating on garbage cans, they're sitting on curbs, they are sitting in front of my hotel, they're standing in front of my hotel with their to-go boxes on my banisters. And so, and trash is overflowing everywhere. I'm cleaning up my neighbor's trash, not, it's not my neighbor's, it's a trash can in public that's overflowing every day. So these unintended consequences are that people are dining outside anyway, and actually, outside is the better place to be with social distancing in mind. So in regards to having, you know, if we allow picnicking in the parklets and it's okay with the state, it would have to be up to the restaurants to police it, it would and clean it and sanitize it, that's part of the responsibility. If you don't want to do that, then you would not have your tables and chairs out. So for those restaurants that don't feel comfortable with policing and they don't want that, they just wouldn't do it. They could still offer takeout, of course, but they're not going to offer their space for the public. So I am concerned because we already have people consuming food in public space in unsafe manners, and that's what concerns me. The protocols that we have in place for hospitality, the COVID protocols and cleaning protocols, the restaurants abide by, the hotels abide by, and so, you know, the restaurant would know that they would have to be responsible for cleaning their space. And, you know, as a group, the restaurants need to work together. If somebody from another restaurant is going to eat your food in your space, that's the way it's going to go right now. Obviously, we want to move to have full-service outdoor dining again, and the mayor and Chip are working with the county to do that, they're even working with the state to try to do that. So, you know, this issue that Brian brought up about the state level, did Marnie look into that at all, or did we just stop at the county level? I guess that's my question before we go on.
Marnie or Chip?
No, you know, we had very little time in preparing this report, so I do apologize that we did not do any further outreach and discuss with the county or the state.
And Marnie, I do appreciate the fact you did not have a lot of time to put the staff report together, I understand that, and you do have my full understanding.
So, at this point, I'm willing to make a motion to, for discussion purposes, to allow picnicking in the right-of-way of parklets that are city property, and then I can outline some of the critical areas, like you said, A through J, but I think for discussion purposes, let me put that motion on the table.
And I'll second it for discussion, and this is for discussion only. I'd like to keep some structure to this meeting so we know where we're going. We do have a meeting, the motion is very specific to approve dining in the parklets only, not in the private properties, strictly in the public, in the public park places, in the parklets. All right, Jeff or Karen? Karen, you seem to have your mic unmuted.
Okay, I cannot support that motion. I cannot support anything that goes against the state's stay-at-home order at this time. When and if the state changes those, I am all for going back to the outdoor dining as we had it until we see fit to end that program. But I cannot do an end run around the health and safety issues regarding COVID. We have COVID in our community, our Biobot report shows we have COVID in our community, our hospitals, we have ICU beds available, elective surgeries have been canceled, and I cannot put our community at more risk and create an enforcement nightmare and a nightmare that could set up fights between restaurants with each other over whose trash it is, people bringing their picnics from home and parking themselves into a parklet and leaving their mess. I think we're creating a big can of worms. There is some light at the end of the tunnel, we are getting vaccines in the next several weeks, and I just think that this is the wrong thing at the wrong time. This is the time we hunker down and we get COVID solved, because the only way we come back to full economic viability is we get our restaurants back indoors where they want to be eventually, back to normal. We should be spending our time now helping the restaurants prepare for when they go back indoors safely, so that people will feel comfortable coming back to stay in our town and eat in our town. I also am very, very concerned, there is no way that all of the hotels could have that many essential workers staying there. And I think there are many people trying to circumvent the health orders. We know that masking is a big part of it, when people sit for a prolonged period of time without masks, they endanger themselves and other people around them. And we have been a little bit lenient, it's not six feet between tables that is the ideal thing, it's six feet minimum between people. So, no, I cannot support this motion.
Thank you, Karen. Jeff?
Thank you, Dave. Am I muted, Dave? Am I good?
You're talking.
Excellent. I also can't support the motion at this time. I would say, you know, Brian talked a little bit about the nexus between the state rules, which I do believe, like Councilmember Folio, I do believe we have to abide by, and the fact that in the, in the, the sort of things that are framed, the discussion, you know, A through J, you know, item A says permit holders, and item E says permit holders do this, and item F says permit holders do that, and item G says permit holders do this other thing. You know, part of this program, the thing that seems to be baked into this program is the city trying to have its cake and eat it too, which is to sort of set up these parks, but then have the restaurants do, have the restaurants take care of them, you know, manage the trash, manage the social distancing and all that stuff. And to me, this just seems like, you know, even if the state were to come back and say that this is legal, you know, by the letter of the law, even if we can get an opinion that says this is legal by the letter of the law, it's not legal, in my feeling, it's not legal to the intent of the law. The intent of the law is to encourage people to stay home and so we can get this under control, and that's just not, that's what's not happening, and that's why we are in this fix. I would like to make a few more comments, if that's okay. Someone has said, someone remarked that we don't have any cases in the community, and, you know, we don't have any of the cases in the community because we have an older community, people are staying home. You know, I haven't been to Tahiti in the past three months, I haven't been to Lake Tahoe skiing, I haven't been to Santa Barbara, in fact, I haven't even been to Santa Cruz. So there are a lot of people in this community that are petrified of going out and don't travel, and we stay within 10 or 15 miles of our home. And, you know, I do with a smile on my face and all these things, as does everyone else here, but you have to understand, there are a lot of people sacrificing here, and that's one of the reasons that we don't have very many cases in town. Someone else commented that we don't have outbreaks, and that's simply not true. We have had cases of COVID in the hotel staff, and we have had restaurants have outbreaks, and we have had restaurants close. So, you know, COVID is around here, we are not, as a community, immune to the effects of this infectious disease. And I think Amanda, I think it was Amanda Levand, excuse me if I'm wrong, pointed out that we all have one enemy, and the enemy here is COVID, and we need to band together and figure out how to have a safe community and how to promote these things that are important to us without bringing more people in town. And I understand that, you know, I understand that, you know, people are going to come here and all that. But I think Chris Sanders is right, when someone posts a selfie on Instagram of someone eating in the B Clet parking, you know, B Clet spot or the Demetra spot or whatever, everyone is going to see this, and they're not going to understand that, you know, we have picnicking, not outdoor dining, and people are going to come to town. Now, this is the nature of how social networking works. And so this is, I know, you know, I feel for everybody, you know, I feel for the businesses, I feel for our residents, this is an extraordinarily difficult situation, but I don't feel like picnicking in the park, I don't feel like picnicking in the parklets is really just, I don't feel like that is really setting us up to succeed in the future, and I don't feel like this is really the right, this is, I don't feel like this is the right dimension for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So as a second round, just weigh in briefly here. I do think that it's very difficult to prove that there's any nexus between the transmission of COVID and the dining experience, especially the outdoor dining experience. I think that what's happening is we have mass gatherings that are being ignored, we've got a serious blip now going on because of inappropriate travel patterns, people gathering over the holidays, I think that's where we're seeing the major outbreaks. I've had three personal incidences, but they were all based on where the people live. One was in the caregiver for my elderly in-laws, one was with a construction worker in my crew, and one was in our housekeeper, and that was a lifestyle issue. It had nothing to do with where they dined, where they ate, whether they were in Carmel. I also think that there is a serious problem in this town with the litter issue. I've got people outside in front of my house going by on the way to the dump, putting their trash in my trash container, which they have to enter my property, it's not as even if I have it on my side of the street. Also, people dining on the wall out front here. I'm not objecting to that, it's just that I really would rather they did it in the commercial area, I just happen to rebut the commercial area. I think that we are actually more scared of this virus than we should be in this community, because if you practice the right distancing rules, you wear a mask, and we're very good at enforcing those ordinances, then I think that that's where we should be putting our efforts. But to say no to any sort of dining when there's no nexus whatsoever to proving that this is actually causing illness, I think is fear tactics, and I don't support that. I think that we realize that we actually will also put the outside dining issue, but getting there now is not going to happen, and with the... And with the person who said tonight, "I'm going to support outside dining," that's not the question before us tonight. Question before us is, this is not a loophole either. I do not think this is subjective interpretation of law. I think, I've checked with county council at this county level, and I've checked with Brian, and they both agree, this is permitted within certain parameters. I think the force tonight is the question, do we want to allow this? I'm going to support it. But I also want to make sure that we do put some guidelines, some bumpers on this, some boundaries on this, so that we don't go ahead and have reckless behavior. And I do think, one violation and you lose your ability to maintain a parklet, I think that's pretty stiff, and I think that's appropriate. Brian, are you getting ready to say something?
I was, but I didn't want to interrupt you, Mayor.
Never stopped you before.
You were on a roll. So, here's the situation, as I see it, from a legal standpoint. I heard what the motion is, which is basically to allow picnicking in the parklets because it's city property. That's why I wrote down the motion.
Followed by perhaps another motion, go ahead and put boundaries on it.
Okay, so, well, I'm just reacting to the motion that I heard. I'd indicated in my earlier comments that there were a couple of issues that I felt needed to be, depending on your direction tonight, reviewed before there would be actual dining allowed in the parklets. One of them was insurance. You already heard from Chip, and I agree with him, that we certainly wouldn't want the city's liability carrier to be exposed, because that's going to negatively impact the city and its loss experience, and could result in increased premiums. So it would be necessary to confirm whether or not the insurance companies for the restaurants would provide coverage for injuries that occur in parklets that we're saying are public property and they're not under the control of the restaurant. So that's the insurance piece. And then the state, as I said in my earlier comments, we would want to, before the parklets are opened up to dining, would want to check with the state and see whether or not there were, whether that was consistent with the state orders, especially if the restaurants are going to be involved in that dining experience, if you will, by bringing out tables, cleaning trash, sanitizing, basically exercising control over that area. Because they don't do that in a park. So, these aren't parks, but they are public property. And I agree that, under ordinary circumstances, you would be able to allow dining in that area, but you do have a state order. And as I said earlier, the county is basically following the state order. So I do have a suggestion to you, which would be this. Perhaps you would want to defer a decision on whether to approve dining in the parklets, possibly until your meeting on February 2nd. I know that's, today's the 21st, so that's a couple of weeks from now. But that could allow an opportunity for two things. One is some contacts with the insurance companies, and the restaurants could contact their insurance companies and ask if the customers that, and the public that are using these parklets that may not be customers of the restaurant adjacent to it, whether their coverage would apply, and get confirmation on that. And then the second piece would be to check with the state and say, here's what's being discussed. And we would need a little more detail about what it is that's being discussed. Are you, for example, going to allow the restaurants to put tables out there? Are you going to require them? I mean, if I look through all these items on what the permit holders is going to do, they're going to be responsible for sanitizing the area, they are going to provide receptacles for trash, they need to do various other things that are listed here. So that shows some involvement by the restaurant in the public area. And my advice to you would be to, we should check in with the state. So what I'm concerned about is, if you make a decision tonight and you say, yeah, let's approve this motion and let's allow dining in the parklets, it may be that we find out upon checking that the restaurant insurance companies are not going to insure it, and/or we find out that the state says no, that would be a violation of the state order. I heard comments earlier about some lawsuits that are pending. You know, lawsuits are what they are, but they're just allegations that have been filed with the court. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any decision by any court that the state order prohibiting dining, except for takeout, is illegal or in violation of any, you know, constitutional limitation. So the state order, to my knowledge, is still in effect, notwithstanding what there may be in terms of pending lawsuits. So that's my advice.
So Brian, continuing the debate with you then, I would think that, I've always advocated it's not a good idea to go ahead and sue the county, as Carmel by the sea. I don't think there's any unified effort out there to go ahead and sue Monterey County. I think we may have some frustrations with the way they've been moving forward or going in a circular direction on this issue. But I don't, I'm not going to advocate for suing the county. I would rather wait and see what these other cases, how they play out, and see what's happening with that. As far as the issue about going ahead and getting clarity at the state level, I'd be interested in seeing how you think you're going to get a definitive answer out of the state in a prompt manner. I also don't think there's anything that's forcing any of these restaurants to go ahead and open up their parklets. This is, if you want to do it, you can do it. If you're concerned, you don't, if you don't want to do it, you don't have to do it. There's nothing forcing the public, let alone the residents of Carmel, to go to these parklets and eat. That's not what we're forced tonight. I don't have a problem continuing the motion, or going ahead and giving specific direction under the motion. But I do think that these other items that are in here that you mentioned, A through J, those are all issues that you can ask the state without a motion from us. They're all questions that are out there as just general issues that we'd be concerned with if we were going to move forward with this. Chip, you're going to be baldered by the night. Are you rubbing your head, or are you just, you know, cue balling me, or what are you doing here?
Just for good luck, Mayor, just for good luck.
Well, let me say that I agree with everything you just said, Mayor. And I should make clear that I was certainly not suggesting that city Carmel sue the county.
That's what many of the restaurants would like to do. I want to get it on the record that I don't think that's a smart idea.
Yeah, I don't, I agree 100%. That's not, I don't think there's a basis for such a lawsuit. When I was talking about lawsuits, I was talking about a comment that had been made by one of the speakers that said, you know, there's lawsuits out there, and someone had given an opinion in that lawsuit about whether or not outdoor dining contributed to the spread of COVID. And all I'm saying is, the fact that there's existing lawsuits doesn't change the fact that you currently have in effect a state order. And if the city were to proceed without getting direction from the state on this, I'm just advising you from a legal standpoint, that there's a potential that the state may oppose the action that you're taking.
I wasn't challenging you, Brian, I was simply stating what I'd recommend to the restaurant community, what they should or shouldn't do as far as litigation. Karen, you've had your hand up for a while.
Yes, I found out something tonight that concerns me greatly, that the insurance contracts have not been renewed. Is that what you said, Chip? And if so, I am extremely, even access those parklets, that they're not ordoned off, if they are not insured, they should not even be accessible.
Yes, ma'am, I should probably rephrase. The, any encroachment permit requires insurance. So if you put, you know, if we would allow rocks out in the right of way at the end of your driveway, for example, ma'am, we would require an encroachment permit because it's in the public space, the public right of way, and through issuance of an encroachment permit, we would require insurance. I don't, the restaurateurs had insurance for some aspect of the outdoor seating. As part of, again, a traditional encroachment permit, they have to have insurance. So I'd need to check with Marty to ensure that some level of insurance, but I believe it is, is still being maintained by the restaurateurs for the platforms that have been left out in the right of way. And again, we'll confirm that right away, because I share your fear.
Karen, was that it?
Yes.
That's a good point. So Brian, back to your suggestion, we go to the state. Can you get an answer to this by the February meeting of this body?
We don't know till you ask. I can certainly check around, for example, within my firm, to see if anyone has been having contact with any state officials. And perhaps Chip and others could do the same with their peers or contacts. You know, certainly, you're not just going to pick up the phone and dial the state and get an answer over the phone in five minutes. But it may not be possible to get an answer, or you may not get it in time. And then you need to make a decision as to whether you're prepared to proceed, given what the scope of the state order says. So the answer to your question is, we won't know until we try.
Maybe. So Carrie, as a Megan, or basically what you've heard, what's your thoughts?
Well, I think, in order to discuss A through J, we would, I would suggest we vote on the motion, unless, because then we have an idea of whether there is impetus for discussing the details. They, I'm also okay with deferring to February 2nd. That's only two weeks away. And we've got a bunch of rain happening next week.
Not the anomaly this weekend was. 79 degrees in the middle of January in Carmel and Monterey, unheard of.
Exactly. We haven't had a winter, let's put it that way. So, I mean, the city council meeting on February 2nd is, you know, less than two weeks away. So if we want to do some more research, I can withdraw the motion, and we could, I can make a motion to defer, so.
About a motion to continue, a motion to continue the item.
Yes, continue the item.
Chip, I don't think the agenda is too crowded for that meeting, is it?
No, sir. No, that would be fine. We'll have mid-year budget review, which is always exciting. We have the Monterey Fire RFP issue, and we'll have this item, sir. So it won't be too much, I don't think.
So Mayor, I did have one other thing to say. So we would need to know what it is that, what's the question that we would be asking the state? And I guess maybe the insurance companies too. And would the question be whether proceeding with outdoor dining with the recommended actions of A through J be consistent with the state's order? Is that the question? Or would there be some of these features that are listed in A through J that you would not want to include in that question?
So, I mean, you were the one who actually kind of threw the wrinkle on this whole thing a while ago, and had the questions kind of framed, I thought, yourself there a moment ago. So why don't you walk me back through what your concerns were, and then we'll see if we want to add on or subtract.
Okay, well, what I've said is, before you make a decision to approve dining in parklets, which is what Carrie's motion was, that you would perhaps want to confirm with the insurance companies if there's coverage in the state on whether there's an order. Right. So, but what we will need to do is to get an understanding about what is the question that we're going to be taking to the insurance companies and to the state? And is the question, for example, is the council's direction to have that discussion with the insurance companies and the state consider all of the recommendations that are listed A through J?
So to that, Brian, if I might, I'm just going to say that what we're doing basically is returning this to simply a parking space issue. Basically, you don't control your own parking in front of your restaurant, it's a parking space. And so you're going ahead and saying, this is a parking space, and we're going to allow you to dine in a parking space, as if you're going to picnic in the public right of way. I think that's a pretty straight up and down question for an insurance company. I don't think they're going to care about, you know, table service and all those other issues. Seems to me that's a pretty simple, straightforward, is this or is this not something you're going to cover with insurance? And then we would go ahead and say to the state these other issues.
It may be true, what you just said, but, and it's probably correct, that the insurance company.
I'm not trying to limit it, I'm just giving you my sort of view.
The insurance company would probably not be as concerned as the state would in terms of what the details are. The insurance company is probably primarily concerned about the fact that you're going to have diners in a parklet that are not, that did not get their food at the restaurant adjacent to the parklet. And that may be the primary concern of the insurance companies. But I think the state is going to be, would want to know, when you ask the question, or whoever it is that's talking to the state, what are the specifics? When you're saying you're going to allow dining in the parklets, for example, are you going to let them set up tables? Are you going to, you know, allow table service or not? And then, once we get all those, you know, proposals together, we could present it. So my advice to you at this point would be to perhaps get some input from the council on whether or not they agree that if there were to be dining in the parklets, would the conditions A through J that are recommended be part of that permission?
So then, procedurally, I would guess the best thing we do is we actually see if there's three or more people that would like to continue this item until the February meeting with direction, or do we want to just blow it up right now and say, we're not even going to discuss it? So I think that's basically Carrie's motion, was to go ahead and have this item continued to February with direction to council and to staff to go ahead and get these questions asked and answered.
Okay, well, I don't want to belabor this, but perhaps we need a preliminary, the more we talk about it, which is, we're having this conversation. Perhaps a preliminary motion would be in order that would, and I'll see if I can frame it, and if somebody wants to endorse it, I could do that. The motion would be, direction to staff to consult with the insurance company, consult with the restaurants regarding their insurance coverage for outdoor dining.
For, in parklets.
In parklets, under the conditions A through J. And also to consult with the state regarding outdoor dining with those conditions. So I think that would be the motion. You're just basically giving direction to staff to check with the insurance companies, the restaurants, and to have them check with their insurance companies, and then to check with the state. Now, if one of these items, A through J, you don't want to include, you know, you should probably indicate that now, because we don't want to be asking the state whether or not, you know, these can happen. And then have you say, well, we didn't want to do D or G, for example. And it may be, in the consultations with the state, they might say, okay, they can do, you can have the dining, but you can't do some of these. In which case, we come back to you on February 2nd, and we say, all right, we checked in with the state, and, you know, they won't go through A through J, they'll just go these three or four restrictions. So that would be the motion. I know I've been talking for a while, it's an occupational hazard, but I would just say that the motion is, direction to staff to consult with the restaurants and their insurance companies regarding dining in the parklets, and to consult with the state regarding dining in the parklets with the recommendations A through J.
All right. So Bobby, you're trying to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. What if, okay, these are the, staff recommends the following, A through J. What if there were other items that needed to be attached to this? Like, how many seats would be allowed? What time should they close? These types of questions, should they be involved in with the A through J? Because I feel like our guidelines here aren't very strong. And I think that we need clear, strong guidelines, at least before I vote on anything. That's what I would, that's what I would need, is the strong guidelines.
Well, what could be done, if you were favorable to the motion that I just suggested, and if that gets a majority vote, we could consult with the insurance companies and the restaurants, they can consult with their insurance companies. And we consult with the state, and we report back to you for your meeting on February 2nd. And if you wanted to add conditions or more specifics, I don't think that would be a problem. Of course, it depends on what it is you're trying to add. But I think the threshold questions that need to be resolved here are, will insurance cover losses in the parklets if somebody gets hurt? And the second one is, is the state, is there going to be an issue with the state order? And once we resolve those threshold questions, we need some parameters. And once we resolve those threshold questions, we need some parameters, which is why I've mentioned A through J. And we report back to you and if you wished at that time, that would be the time, in my opinion, to make the motion of whether or not to allow dining in the parklets because then you will.
Picnicking in the parklets.
I'm, excuse, yeah.
I'm sorry. It is specific. I'm trying, but we have to be specific because we've already have a whole set of rules for dining in parklets. We're talking about picnicking in parklets.
I understand, I, I used the wrong word.
This is what I've been using on my notes, it's all been picnicking in the parklets.
Thank you.
That's what Brian is trying to get across.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I ask Brian a quick question? Would that be okay?
Go ahead and Brandon.
Hey, Brian, I was taking notes at the beginning of this force of habit and, and doing these meetings for a while. Um, I, I also noticed that you mentioned earlier on that we might want to check with ABC as well to see if there was a different type of license. I think that was the third thing you might have mentioned early on was check with ABC if it's a different type of license, uh, for alcohol in the parklets for picnicking.
Yeah, that's a good point, Brandon. And I think Marty's actually the one that spotted that issue. Um, and so I could add to, to the motion, if you will, that I've tried to fashion here, that the third thing would be to, to check to see if there's any issues with, uh, outdoor service of alcohol, um, and consumption of alcohol and whatever the alcohol-related issues are with ABC and whoever else they need to talk to.
Thank you, Brandon. Good point. All right, Carrie.
So I'm willing to withdraw my motion and, um, take, uh, the motion that Brian just suggested, um, as, uh, to, um, I'm willing to accept the motion that Brian just suggested in terms of finding out, uh, these issues with insurance companies and the state and alcohol.
I'll second it, continue the discussion. Britt, are you clear on the motion?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Another discussion. Bobby.
Can, can the motion be read, please?
Certainly, Britt.
Yes. Okay, so I have direction to staff to consult with the restaurants and the insurance companies for picnicking in the parklets and also consult with the state for those conditions A through J on the staff report and to check and see, and to check with ABC for the alcohol-related
Is there anything about, is there anything about creating guidelines?
Not in the motion, not with what Brian put forth.
Council member, I, I would suggest that that would be something, since this is a motion to continue the item to, 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 uh, research these, these three questions, that when this comes back to you, you can, you know, and, and this is something that's permissible to the council, that's when you can add conditions to, um, to this concept.
Exactly. And perhaps, um, as a, um, final piece to the motion would be, and that the item would be continued to your, to your meeting on February 2nd for a, a report to the council on what, uh, staff has learned from those inquiries.
To a date specific, exactly.
Thank you.
Given motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Jeff, I'm sorry, and Karen.
No worries. Thank you. Um, so I won't be supporting the motion. I think that Brian, Brian mentioned a couple of, a couple of good concerns regarding the state and regarding the insurance companies. I have one, as I said earlier, I also have a concern about the enforcement. Um, you know, we, we've outlined a program that required, that will, I think will require a lot of enforcement from city staff to make work. And not only enforcement from city staff, but a lack of enforcement, um, for things they don't like from the restaurateurs. And I just, I don't find the program to be basically workable. Um, I would make a suggestion, um, to, to, uh, to staff before you return in February and that would be to do an informal poll of the restaurants and see, you know, we've had a pretty, uh, vibrant discussion here about what's involved in this program and what's not vis a vis other restaurants allowing, being allowed, other patrons and, you know, people from Monterey being allowed to, um, picnic in our parklets, which by the way, is a very catchy phrase and I do like that. But we, um, we've had a really, a really good discussion about the overall accessibility of these parklets to people that are not customers. And given the discussion that you have had, I would encourage staff to reach out to the restaurants to find out how many of them are going to sign up, given the conditions that we have, we have heard. I know we heard some, um, some reluctance at the beginning of the conversation, um, from one restaurant owner and from more than one restaurant owner. And so that would also be a useful piece of information to have coming into the February meeting. But as I said before, as it is now, I, I won't support the motion.
And Jeff, that's just a suggestion, not under part of the motion, so understood. All right, Karen, did you have something you wanted to say? Karen, you're muted. Still muted.
Uh, yes.
There you go.
I'm sorry, but I cannot support this, uh, motion either. I think that we are just borrowing trouble with this. We are causing enforcement issues, staff issues and spending much more money than it is worth. So I'm sorry, I, I'm not in agreement with the motion.
No problem. It's a democratic process, it's fine with me. All right, is there any other discussion before I call a question here? All right, Britt, can we have a roll call?
Okay. Councilmember Barron?
No.
Furleto?
No.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yep.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
Hey, the mash, the motion passes with three yes votes with Councilmember Barron and Furleto voting no.
All righty. Well, that is the end of tonight's business with a lot of direction, a lot of discussion. I want to really applaud the public and I'd like to thank my colleagues on the council for having a good discussion, a good debate, recognizing that there's times when we're going to disagree, but I think we've done so professionally. Hopefully that's the trend in Washington these days too. No guarantees, but let's hope. And I want to thank you all and I want to thank the public too. This is not an easy topic. Nothing's easy in Carmel, as we all know, but this has been very, very complicated. We're all trying to do the best for the community, regardless of whether we're concerned about the restaurants or the residents. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think we all carry the same concerns, just have a difference of opinion on how we're going to move forward. Hopefully we'll put this issue behind us and eventually this whole damn thing will go away, but it's going to be a while, so hang on. Thank you guys for your time and participation. Much appreciated. Thanks again to the public. And Brian, thank you for, for.
My pleasure.
Bringing up the issues that I wanted you to bring up. I really appreciate it. I always enjoy a spirited little discussion, so thank you.
I think that's how you get to a result, right?
Exactly, exactly. Thank you, guys. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye.